We will begin our meeting tonight with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Chris Glover. So I'd invite everyone to please stand for the moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a great first item on our agenda today, and that is the appointment of Alicia Lawler as a city magistrate. This has been discussed in previous meetings. Council, is there a motion to move forward on this item? Thank you. Mr. Luna has made the motion, and I think Mr. Freeman has seconded that. Prior to calling for the vote, let me give the public a little bit of background about Ms. Lawler. We have a short paragraph of a bio on her. Ms. Lawler has a bachelor's degree in sociology-psychology and a law degree from Arizona State University. She was admitted to the Arizona Bar in 1987. She currently serves as a judge pro tem for the Phoenix Municipal Court, the Scottsdale City Court, and the Mesa Municipal Court. Her previous experience includes work as a judge pro tem for several Phoenix-area municipal courts. Prior to her service on the bench, she worked as an attorney in private practice for several years. With several years of judicial experience, Ms. Lawler has described, was described as smart, hard-working, detailed, able to handle a busy calendar, and patient. It was noted that she has overcome some challenging life experiences, which has allowed her to deal with difficulties. Her ability to work as a team player, empathize with those appearing before her, and exhibit a calm demeanor were all identified as attributes. So we have a motion and a second to proceed. Council, please cast your vote. Thank you. The vote is unanimous. Ms. Lawler, I would invite you forward, and I will be honored to swear you in as a city magistrate. About to read your bio. We've already done that. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Alicia Lawler, do solemnly swear..."
"I, Alicia Lawler, do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same."
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same."
"...and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"...and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties..."
"...of the office of city magistrate of the city of Mesa, Arizona."
"...of the office of city magistrate of the city of Mesa, Arizona."
"...according to the best of my ability, so help me God."
"...according to the best of my abilities, so help me God."
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. Judge Lawler, we'd invite you to take a minute or two and express any thoughts that you have at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to...
Let's just do this.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for this great honor and opportunity to serve the citizens of Mesa. I'd also like to thank this, take this opportunity to thank the members of the Judicial Advisory Board for their vote of confidence in recommending me as a finalist with the other two exceptionally well-qualified candidates. I'm so happy that I was your choice, and I intend to work hard to exceed your expectations. I'm looking forward to my duties on the bench, and I'm also looking forward to becoming part of the community here in Mesa. It really is a vibrant and impressive city. To all of the people who supported and encouraged and endorsed me in this process and throughout my career, I'm deeply grateful to you. I know that I would not be here tonight without, without you. And to my family and friends that are here tonight, would you please stand for a moment? I'm so glad that you are here. Your love and support means everything to me, and I just, I'm just so glad you're here. Everything is, is so much better to share it with the people that you love, so thank you, I love you. Please be seated. And, please be seated. That's enough.
She's acting like a judge. A judge. The judge is him.
I'm already bossing him around. My family in Chicago, my mother, Mary Kay, my sisters, Michelle and Laura, my brothers, Jamie and David, and my father, Jim, who I know is, is smiling down from above, thank you for being a constant source of strength and humor in my life. And to the rest of my friends and family who could not be here tonight because they're sitting on a beach somewhere enjoying the Fourth of July holiday, you're here in spirit. My daughter Lucy is one of those people at the beach right now. She is truly enjoying her summer to the fullest before she takes off for college in August. And Lucy, I just want to say, being your mother has been and will always be the greatest joy of my life. I'm so proud of you, and I'm so excited for the new chapters that are about to begin in both of our lives, you away at college and me as a Mesa Municipal Court judge. I realized as soon as I started working at the court as a judge pro tem what an exceptional and innovative court this was, and that I wanted to be a member of the bench here. So to have that goal realized tonight feels so great. I am just so looking forward to my duties and just want to say thank you to everyone very much. I realize that the Mesa Municipal Court, for many people, may be the only experience they ever have with the third branch of government, and I may be the only judge they ever see. So that's a weighty responsibility that I welcome and take very seriously. The public's trust in the judiciary is critical to our system of justice, and so I pledge that I will work hard every day and conduct myself always in a manner that promotes and enhances that trust. The law is truly an honorable profession, and I stand here tonight very happy and very honored by this. I'm looking forward to the leadership of Judge Defoea and to working alongside my fellow judges. I intend to work hard every day to earn my place on that impressive bench. So I'm very much looking forward to starting. I'm very excited, and again, thank you for this honor and opportunity.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Judge Lawler. I think you can tell we got a good one. This is a very qualified candidate that's going to make an exceptional judge. It's also good to remind everyone that she's going to fit in really well at our court. All of our judges are of this caliber. We're very proud of the court, very proud of Judge Defoea and the very innovative things that are happening in the Mesa City Court. So thank you and congratulations. The next item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. During our study session, there were a few items that were removed from the consent agenda, and I think you know that, Mr. Christopher. That would be Agenda Item 6I, J, K, and L. And a moment ago, I was handed a, a blue card to remove Item 9A. So if you would also remove that from the consent agenda as well. Mr. Glover, you've been helping me manage these cards. Do we have any, anything else on the consent agenda that we've had a blue card on? Okay. So we do have a couple, or three cards having to do with Agenda Item 8A. And so we should probably, I think we need to pull this item as well to allow the opportunity to speak on that. This, and this is on Item 8A as well. So, Mr. Christopher, if you'd strike Item 8A. So we will be moving forward with Agenda Items 8A off of the consent, 9A off of the consent, and 6I, J, K, and L. Okay? Ms. Mickelson, have we received any other requests to speak? All right, thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Christopher.
All right, Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 3, approval minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 4A, act on liquor license application for Mesa Chamber of Commerce, one-day event, Saturday, August 25th, 922 South Country Club Drive. Item 4B, act on liquor license application for Augusta Ranch Golf Club, 2401 South Lansing. Item 4C, act on liquor license application for Fired Pie, 2015, South Alma School Road. Item 4D, act on liquor license application for Pro Chicken, 1933 West Main Street. Item 5A, act to ratify emergency purchase of 18 mobile two-way radios, accessories, and related equipment for the Fire and Medical Department. Item 5B, act on contract to replace the police records management and field-based reporting system for the Police Department. Item 5C, act on contract to purchase four sedans, one replacement, and three additions for the Police Department. This purchase is funded in part by a grant from the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community. Item 5D, act on contract to purchase two light-duty pickup trucks, one addition for Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department, and one addition for the Fleet Services Department. This purchase is funded in part by the environmental compliance fee. Item 5E, act on contract to purchase six replacement automated side-loading refuse trucks for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. This purchase is funded in part by the solid waste development fee. Item 5F, act on contract to purchase a replacement upgrade wireless communication system for the Arts and Culture Department. This purchase is funded by the Mesa Arts Center Restoration Fee. Item 5G, act on three-year term contract for household hazardous waste facility operational support for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. This contract is funded by the Mesa Green and Clean Fee Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Item 5H, act on contract to purchase one skip loader tracker for the Transportation Department as requested by the Fleet Services Department. This purchase is funded by the environmental compliance fee. Item 5I, act on contract to purchase one heavy-duty slurry seal truck for the Transportation Department as requested by the Fleet Services Department. This purchase is funded by the local streets fund. Item 5J, act on contract to purchase one medium-duty aerial bucket truck and service body for the Energy Resources Department as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 5K, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for wastewater collection system cleaning, CCTV inspection and recording, and cured in-place point repairs for the Water Resources Department. Item 5L, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for repaired, rebuilt Landia recycle pumps and mixers for the Water Resources Department. Item 5M, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for welding services for the Transportation Department. Item 5N, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for emergency pump rental services for the Transportation Department. Item 5O, act on contract for a 4-inch PE gas line extension, Power Road and Indigo Street to McAlp's Road. This project's funded by 2014 authorized gas bonds. Item 6A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2018-2019 entitlement funds under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, or CDBG, as amended for for-profit organization activities, nonprofit organization activities, and city department activities approved by the City Council. Item 6B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2018-2019 entitlement funds under the Home Investment Partnership Program as amended for for-profit organization activities, nonprofit organization activities, and city department activities approved by the City Council. Item 6C, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to prepare, sign, and submit applications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive fiscal year 2018-2019 entitlement funds under the Stewart B. McKinney Homeless Assistance Act of 1987, or ESG, as amended for activities approved by the City Council. Item 6D, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to disburse fiscal year 2018-2019 human services funds for activities by nonprofits approved by the City Council and to enter into agreements for the dispersment of human services funds. Item 6E, act on resolution approving the fiscal year 2018-2019 annual action plan for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to amend, sign, and submit the annual action plan for fiscal year 2018-2019. Item 6F, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the Loop 101 Mobility Project. This is a multi-agency project allowing for the design and integration of technology into the ADOT system to address safety, improve mobility, and reduce congestion on the Loop 101. The city will contribute in-kind staff time over four years for the portion of the project that is within the city's boundaries. Item 6G, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the FBI for the sharing of radio communication sites and facilities. Item 6H, act on resolution calling a special bond election to submit to the qualified electors of the city of Mesa in conjunction with a general election to be held on November 6, 2018, the question of authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation funds of the city for the purposes of public safety facilities and improvements, and support equipment and vehicles, and designating the manner in which the election is conducted, the translation of election materials, voter registration deadlines, and early voting dates. Items 6I, 6J, 6K, and 6L have been removed from the consent agenda. Item 7A, act on resolution declaring the document filed with the city clerk entitled 2018 Sign Code and identified for codification as Chapters 41 through 50 of Title 11, the zoning ordinance of the Mesa City Code, to be a public record and providing for the availability of the document for public use and inspection. Item 7B, introduction of ordinance repealing the existing Chapter 41 of Title 11 of the Mesa City Code entitled Sign Regulations in its entirety and adopting the 2018 Sign Code, a public record of the city of Mesa as Chapters 41 through 50 of Title 11, the zoning ordinance of the Mesa City Code. Item 8A has been removed from consent agenda. Item 8B, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON18-00375, the Zero Block of South Mesa Drive on the east side, the 400 Block of East Main Street on the south side, the Zero Block of South Udall both sides, and the Zero Block of South Lesweer on the west side. This is located at the southeast corner of Main Street and Mesa Drive, a rezone to allow for mixed-use development. Item 9A has been removed from consent agenda. Item 9B, act on ordinance regarding ZON17-00507, the 1200 Block of North Ellsworth Road and the 9100 Block of East Glen Cove Avenue, located north of Brown Road on the west side of Ellsworth Road. Rezone and site plan modification to allow for development of an enclosed RV storage facility. Item 9C, act on ordinance regarding ZON18-00065, the 8900 Block of East Germain Road, located on the north side of Germain Road, west of Ellsworth Road. Council use permit and site plan review to allow for development of an indoor recreation facility. Item 9D, act on ordinance regarding ZON18-00132, 324 North Country Club Drive, located south of University Drive on the west side of Country Club Drive. This is a rezone, site plan review, and special use permit to allow modifications to an existing car wash. Item 9E, act on ordinance regarding ZON18-00118, the 7500 Block of East Billing Street and the 100 to 200 blocks of North Sausman Road, located on the west side of Sausman Road, north of Main Street. Rezone and site plan review to allow for development of a townhome subdivision. Item 10A, act on subdivision plat, Ray Road Commerce Center North, the 7100 to 7300 blocks of East Ray Road, located east of Power Road on the north side of Ray Road. Item 10B, act on subdivision plat, Mountain Vista Marketplace Phase 1, the 10,700 to 10,800 blocks of East Southern Avenue, and the 1200 through 1300 blocks of South Signal Butte Road, located on the south side of Southern Avenue on the west side of Signal Butte Road. And Item 10C, act on subdivision plat, map of dedication for the Presidio Apartments, the 700 Block of North Country Club Drive, located north of University Drive on the east side of Country Club Drive. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Mr. Freeman has made a motion. Mr. Luna has seconded that motion for approval of the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. Thank you. The vote is unanimous in favor of adopting the consent agenda. The first item that is off of the consent agenda is Item 6I. Mr. Smith, should I read this entire paragraph?
You can shorten it, Mayor.
Okay. So to summarize, Agenda Item 6I is calling a special bond election to submit to the electors of the city of Mesa in the general election on November the 6th, authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds for the purpose of building libraries, museums, arts and cultural facilities, improvements to parks, open space, and recreational facilities. So it's trails, parks, libraries, youth sports fields. Is there any request to speak on this item? Okay. Council, any questions regarding this item? If not, is there a motion on this? Thank you. Mr. Glover's made a motion, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. The vote is six in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay, so the motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 6J. I will summarize this as well. This is submitting, again, to the, to the voters of the city of Mesa on the November 6th ballot, a provision that would allow us pursuant to the city charter to build a sports-related facility. That's tied specifically to the youth sports fields that we talked about a moment ago in the previous motion. We do have several requests to speak on this item, so I'll take them in the order that they were submitted. First is Mike Hutchinson.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's been, it's great to be here to talk about this great bond program that you've put together as a council. I'm Mike Hutchinson. I reside at 40, 42 East Hope Street in Mesa. I serve on the Visit Mesa Board, so we've been actively involved with putting together one of the, one of the many projects that, that is included in this package, and this financing mechanism helps support. A little history may be in order. This is the location of the Mesa Plays Project, one of the major projects within this, this, this large bond package that we're talking about. About 40 years ago, our Parks and Recreation Director, Maury Bateman, came over to my office at 55 North Center and said, "We can buy all this property out in East Mesa for $2 an acre." It's BLM property. They want to sell it to the city for $2 an acre. It was the beginning of Red Mountain District Park. We bought that. Lots of things happened since that. We traded land with the schools, Red Mountain High, high schools built on it. So I've been watching that property for a long time, and we did some great amenities, a lake, soccer fields, a great multi-generational center, but there's that vacant property that I drive by and say, "There's got to be a use." So this, the Mesa Plays Project, to me, is a great, great use of that property. It'll have a major impact on our economy, and will attract people to our community, but importantly, will allow kids in our city and this region to recreate at a great facility that'll have a national reputation. So we support that project. We, I support the whole bond package. It's, I'm really proud to be in a city where we invest in parks and recreation and culture. We're, you guys, you folks are always going to do a good job about basic services, streets, police, fire. We've done that for years in Mesa. We're going to continue to do that. But I think what sets us apart is our investment in, in cultural amenities and parks where our, our kids and seniors can play and recreate. So I commend you for that. We understand the financing mechanism. I think your team, your staff team did a great job as this project evolved over the last few years, a few, and in the last few months, to put together a very strategic plan to finance this. We know there's got to be a couple of, there's a charter issue that the voters have to approve. The other thing I want to say is, many of us in this community work positively, in a positive regard, to pass these issues in our community. And you have the commitment of the Visit Mesa Board and many of us to work very hard to promote not only the parks project, but the questions in, in hand, the two other questions, the bed tax approval and the, and the Charter 613. We're going to work really hard to tell the voters how important that is, along with the other issues that are going to be on the ballot, the public safety, sales tax, the school district, two important school district issues. So I would encourage the public to gather with folks and work together. This stuff will make this community a better place, and that's important for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. I sympathize with those who are clapping, but I have a general, we have a general rule that we don't do that here. I'm sorry. We want everyone who's pro and con to feel welcome to express their points of view, so please refrain from expressing that type of support, although I understand it. Next is Doug Smith.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name's Doug Smith. I'm the general manager of the Marriott Hotel here in downtown Mesa. Mr. Hutchinson did a great job of summarizing all the great aspects of this, and I just wanted to add my support to this, to this item. I think it would be great, not only for the residents of Mesa to take use of the sports complex, but as we host tournaments from out of town, it'll fill hotels like ours and the other hotels in the city, which obviously a great economic generator for the city. So my support for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Vince Gallegos.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Vince Gallegos. I live at 10914 Esopressa Avenue in Mesa. I am here to support the Mesa Plays on behalf of Mesa Soccer Club, who has been in Mesa area since 1976. So we've been coaching and helping out the youth to learn soccer in the state of Arizona, and more importantly, in the city of Mesa. I have coached soccer in Mesa for 14 years and lived here for 22, 23 years now, and in public, the Mesa Public School System for going on six years at high school level, girls varsity soccer. There is a huge demand by Mesa families for new sports fields in Mesa. There are a lot of families that have to regularly drive across town to West Valley and also to North Phoenix to get to games and get to tournaments. Mesa residents who are at our organization, many are Mesa, families, have already spoken time and again that they need more fields in Mesa. The Mesa Plays Youth and Amateur Sports Complex gives us opportunity to have those. However, not only will families immediately be able to benefit from the direct and easy access of the sport facilities, but Mesa residents will also stand to benefit economically. Throughout my travels through soccer and being a coach and going around places, I've been to coaching symposiums, been to national coaching licensing, and one of the key things that I get a lot is the fact that many coaches do know the state of Arizona for soccer. They want to be here. They want to enjoy the beautiful weather, the atmosphere. They want to, and they know that we've got wonderful families here, and we've got great hospitality. The fact of the matter is, is many of them do not know Mesa, Arizona as that destination. And I believe this type of environment or this type of addition to our, our, our community will allow that, will allow them to, to know to spend their money here in the city of Mesa. I believe that Mesa Plays Youth and Amateur Sports Complex is a game changer for Mesa residents, and I'd like to encourage the Mayor and Council to pay strongly consider including and supporting the sports complex in the Parks Bond Proposal. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. Rick Kelsey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rick Kelsey. I'm the chief executive officer for Arizona Soccer Association. We represent 40,000 kids playing in the state of Arizona, 10,000 of which just come from the Southeast Valley. In the last month since I started this job, I was just in Hawaii for regionals. I'm going to Indianapolis, Indiana, to host to the President's Cup National Championship, Frisco, Texas, for the national championship matches, and we also have ODP Regional Championships. Those events have been in Arizona and can come back to Arizona if we have a complex. As was just spoken before me, right now, there's, people know, want to come to Arizona to play soccer, they just say reach 11. The commitment you have from Arizona Soccer Association is to not only bring these events to Arizona, but to promote Mesa, Arizona as the destination for these events, not only at the national and the regional level, but also the local level. We have lots of kids playing, we have lots of families. The Southeast Valley is growing in the game so quickly, and the commitment we're willing to make is to make sure that, again, not only Mesa, Arizona, and this complex is on, on the map locally, but also nationally and regionally. If there's anything that we can do to support the city of Mesa in this endeavor and Visit Mesa, please let us know, because this type of facility is not only wanted, but it's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelsey. David Weir. Thank you. Mr. Weir passes on speaking but expresses support. Danny Court.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Danny Court. I reside at 1756 East Hope Street. This is my son Chase. He resides at the same residence. We're both Mesa residents here, lifelong Mesa residents. I'm wearing two hats today. I am also a principal and economist at LAD Poliquin Company and was one of the principal authors of the Economic and Fiscal Impact Report that you have all seen regarding this, this multi-sport field complex. As an economist, this project makes a whole lot of sense for the city of Mesa, especially for the city of Mesa to be investing in it as a partner. The reason is because the majority of the The reason is because the majority of the benefits that will come, the revenue that will come, will not be captured by the complex itself, but by the city, the businesses in the city, the hotels, the restaurants, the family entertainment centers. All of those will be benefiting, and then the city will be getting sales tax dollars from that, bed tax dollars, property tax dollars. You're going to see new private investment. New hotels will be built because of this complex being here. And you're creating an industry. You're supporting an industry that imports dollars into our economy, which is critical for economic vitality. You need dollars that are not coming from your residents to support your economy. These tourists, these hundreds of thousands of tourists that are projected to come, will come, they'll stay for a short time, and they will inject their money into our economy. And that will ripple throughout the city and throughout the area. Where it's located is very special because in that area of East Mesa, the city will capture a majority of the visitation and the spending, as opposed to other areas of the city that could leak into Tempe or Scottsdale, where it's in a unique location, that it's uniquely Mesa, and it's going to be really hard to not stay in Mesa when you're playing there. As a resident and a father of children who like to play sports, our city needs this. We need these fields. We need places to play for all generations. By the time this is built, some of my children may not even be able to have the chance to play, but generations past us will have that chance as well. So we need these fields, and I, as a resident, would love to tax myself to do so. That's something that you don't hear often, but I want to invest in the city, and this is how it works. This is the best way for it to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Court. Rich Adams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Richard Adams at 1536 East Elmwood Circle in Mesa. The T-shirt guy is back, here in support of Mesa Plays and everything that it promises to bring to Mesa. In full disclosure, Chairman of the Mesa Plays Association, Chairman of Visit Mesa, and a member of the Economic Development Advisory Board as well. We have a number of folks here tonight, I think, that are wearing these shirts, and maybe they'd like to stand up and show you how many folks are here tonight in support of Mesa Plays. I won't parrot back to you everything that the other speakers have already said. They've said so many good things, and it's all accurate. What I would say to you is Mesa Plays is an opportunity to turn a vacant piece of dirt that I think supports frisbee golf right now into a wonderful sports complex, not only for our youth here in Mesa. If we build it, they will come. But if we build it, these other tournament teams and other travel teams and folks from around the country, they will also come because the buzz is already out there. And I think if we build this sports complex, what we just heard, the gentleman with Pollock, these things will happen. And for me, as a 55-year resident of Mesa, seeing all the wonderful things our town has become in the time I've lived here, I think we have an opportunity to take the next step. We have an opportunity to show that this is a community that invests in itself, it invests in the youth here, and that we're willing to step forward and become a leader in the things that we do. We're already a leader in so many things. This is an opportunity to become a leader in sports. And I would encourage your support for this. I appreciate your service to the community and hope we can count on your support for Mesa Plays. I can tell you this, as incoming Chairman of Visit Mesa, Mark Garcia and his team over there, we are a first-class destination marketing organization. And if Mark says we can bring these folks to town, we will bring these folks to town. It will happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mark Garcia.
Mayor, Council, enthusiastic to support this item. Bill, may I ask any questions that you may have?
Thank you. Mr. Garcia is available for questions but doesn't need to speak. Steve West.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to yield the time that I could have and just register my support.
Great. Thank you. Mr. West also expresses support. Nancy Clay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Nancy Clay, and I live at 7706 East Downing Street. I've raised my family, the majority of their years, and raised them in Mesa. This is home to us. It feels like home. And you've heard a lot of great arguments supporting this project, lots of dollars being promised. And one speaker had said that it has a major impact for our city, and he's absolutely right. It has a major impact on me. My backyard is going to be home now to 20, however, how many thousands of people will be in my backyard? When we moved into this home, we downsized, and we spent thousands of dollars investing into this amazing backyard. It's awesome. We have this fantastic hot tub that my husband, he has arthritis, he sits out there at night and he relaxes. It's quiet. During the daytime, we do have some road noise, not a lot. We've got a school and the Red Mountain Center, and so that little noise that I hear, I spent thousands of dollars to put in this beautiful water fountain that I can sit out there and just relax and enjoy. I'm considering spending lots more money to invest in my home, to make it beautiful, new floors, new counters, new everything, because I want this to be my forever home. And now I hear about this project, this huge project that is going to bring lots of change, lots of noise, lots of commotion to my backyard. And that concerns me greatly because I don't want to live with that. I know this will benefit a lot of people, and I wonder if those who are in support of this project have a house that this will be their backyard. Some see an empty lot, some see a dirt patch. When I look at this area, I see beautiful, pristine desert. This area is being used. It's calming, it's beautiful, it's home to wildlife. It's not just empty, and it's not just worthless. It has a lot of value in the area next to it, but sometimes an empty space has lots of value. I appreciate it for that. It makes me really sad to think that this area may change. It will certainly change for our family because my future won't stay there. So I appreciate that decisions are being made, and probably this will not impact at all for you, but it impacts me greatly, and I just need you to hear the other side of what this does for our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clay. Ms. Mickelson, have we had any other requests to speak on this agenda item? Thank you. Council, any questions regarding this item? If not, is there a motion? Let me just... Thank you. Motion has been made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Glover. Please cast your votes. Vote passes, six in favor, Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our agenda is Item 6K. This is also related to the election. This is submitting to the voters of the city of Mesa for the general election on November the 6th, the question of increasing the city's transient lodging tax, also known as the bed tax, by 1%. Are there any requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Council, any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, is there a motion? Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Glover, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. Vote passes, six in favor, with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our agenda, also related to the election, is Agenda Item 6L. This is designating the date of the election as November the 6th and making certain allowances for the deadlines for filing arguments against, for and against, the ballot arguments, and providing deadlines for voter registration and providing the times that the polls will be open. Also designating the question numbers, 1 through 6, and what those questions are. Council, any questions regarding this agenda item? I should have asked, Ms. Mickelson, do we have any requests to speak on this item? Okay. Council, any questions? If not, is there a motion to proceed? Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Glover, seconded by Mr. Horede. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of Agenda Item 6L. The next item off the consent is Agenda Item 8A. That is to introduce ordinances and ordinance and setting the date of July the 9th, which is a week from today, as the date of the public hearing on these ordinances. So again, this is... The item that's before us is whether or not we should conduct a public hearing on a proposed ordinance. Agenda Item 8A is adding Chapter 21, Title 8, Title 5 Business Regulations of the Mesa City Code Regarding the Licensing of Structured Sober Living Homes. We do have a few requests to speak on this item. I'll take them as I receive them. First is Mr. David Jensen... Oh, I'm sorry. Tricia Black on behalf of Mr. David Jensen. Welcome.
Good evening. Speaking on behalf of David Jensen, he's at work tonight, so he couldn't be here. Just a little background for him, he's a longtime Mesa resident. He lives over on Hibbert in District 4. He's got experience with sober living homes, and so this is a little bit of an account. I've sort of paraphrased a bit and cut his statement down, just as far as, you know, his personal experience with sober living homes. And it should be mentioned, again, sorry, Tricia Black. I'm in 136 North Pomeroy, directly next to the new sober living home on Pomeroy. Okay. Apologies here. All right. Sober living group homes must have an onsite administrator who is awake 24 hours a day. That administrator cannot be resident himself. From a health, safety, and clinical perspective, this is absolutely mandatory, but Prescott has found it to be the greatest deterrent for ineffective group home owners. As in my group home experience, the staff cannot share bedrooms or bathrooms with residents. This is also for the health and safety of the residents. Residents cannot go without running water or bathroom facilities for three months, as was the case of the Eris Home, which is on Hibbert. Residents cannot be made to feel like unwelcome burdens because their facility owners are playing loophole limbo, rather than obtaining proper licenses, training staff, and getting permissions. Sober living homeowners should present their plans of service. If there is no scrutiny placed on their plans, the neighbors of these sober living homes carry risk and shoulder the burden of the ineffective caretakers. If there is no service being provided, as referenced in the case from the Eris Foundation, what presents it from being an otherwise well-intended drop house? Proper group homes would promote their services with transparency. Their staff would be licensed and trained. If Eris and others can pay cash for their property, certainly they can afford to provide certified supervision and services. Such responsibilities should be a prerequisite for their nonprofit status and any insurance claim made on behalf of their residents. My home is 100 years old. It is the last recognizable Tempe court home that housed Mormon families who built the Arizona Temple. Owners like my family grow roots in this community. We cherish Mesa and its history. What is the point of a historic designation if it does not provide special consideration and protections? My neighbors and I do not stand to profit by these sober living group or boarding homes. We simply want them to be responsibly monitored, registered, licensed, well-equipped, and safe. David Jensen. And I'm about out of time, but I just wanted to thank you for listening and just to let you know, I've been spending my maternity leave, I just became a mother again, seven weeks ago, researching, putting some privacy fencing, which I found is going to cost my family $11,000. So I just wanted to note that as well on a personal note. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tricia. Congratulations on your birth. Barbara Sutphen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for this opportunity, for letting me speak. As I was going through the new code compliance zoning act that you're looking at now, I just had a couple of questions I'd like answered, if there is someone here who can do that at this time. Has the city of Mesa defined what the maximum safe occupancy of a home would be if it only has 816 square feet? And who would make that determination? Would it be the fire department or someone else? This home is quite small, and so I think at this time, they're planning on serving five people. And my other question is, the city is trying to determine how many people will be allowed into each home. How many must occupy a sober home before it's considered a structured sober living home that requires a license? At this time, I'm unsure about that, as I've read through the particular zoning items that you've posted. And one of the other things I was interested in finding out is the number of persons occupying each bedroom. I think at this point, it's, I think, two. And then I also want to know is, will they submit a floor plan? And then according to what I read, there is a resident screening process, and I would like to know, it's called a resident screening process, and who determines its content? Is it going to be stated somewhere so that we can look at it, or is it only available to the person that's living there? And I guess my biggest concern is at this time, is that we have quite a few sober living homes in our particular area. And what I'm afraid of is that entire area will have so many that it will become an institutionalized area, where it'll lose its flavor as a historic district, but rather it will become known for the amount of sober living homes, halfway living homes that are in that particular site. So if anyone can answer my questions, I would truly appreciate it at this time. If it's going to be only regulated for six or over, then we're still in the same spot. We're still with sober living homes that are going to be unstructured and unregulated, and we won't really have any guarantee of oversight as to what's going on within their closed doors. So thank you very much for your time, and I hope that someone will get back to me with answers to those questions.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Sutphen. Mr. Smith, I wrote down those questions, and I don't know if you did as well. Did you have any... Can you provide any answers?
Yeah, I can provide some, and we can meet afterwards in this meeting to discuss any further. The ordinance says that it applies when there's six unrelated people, and that's similar to Phoenix. It's the exact same number as Phoenix. As far as maximum occupancy, I think the number is, John, if it's more than 10, then it's not an occupancy, then that puts it outside of the group home for the handicap designation, and then it's no longer allowed in the residential district. So it's that 6 to 10 number. It does require a floor plan. That's... I can show you the section regarding that. We've largely mimicked, as we've discussed, the Prescott ordinance, in large part because they've done it for more than a year, but also we're going to be able to utilize some of their implementation procedures because we've done this so quickly, and we'll be able to utilize some of their forms and implementations. So some of the practical implementation plans, we're still working on. But we intend to also follow the same process that Prescott has.
Okay, thank you. So I'm sure there are additional questions on this item. Again, the agenda item that we're talking about today is just whether or not we ought to move forward and conduct a public hearing next Monday night. So you'll have the opportunity to come next Monday night and participate in the public hearing on this ordinance. But certainly, I'm not trying to discourage you from speaking tonight as well. But if there are unresolved questions, I'd invite you to contact Mr. Smith before that meeting as well. But we'll have another discussion on this one week from tonight. Ms. Sutphen, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Joseph Valenzuela.
My question's raptured.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Priscilla Crosswhite.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. Thank you for having us this evening. Did you say that the attorney, did you say that the sober living houses with less than six people, they don't have to be designated disabled? Did you say that a while ago?
Why don't you go ahead and take your time, and then we'll have you respond at the end of your time. I don't want to take your time.
All right. Well, what I was going to say is that, you know, I was looking up information, and according to the federal government, Social Security Administration cannot find a person disabled solely on a diagnosis of chronic alcoholism, however they can on physical or behavioral change that limit their... or behavioral change that limit their ability to function in a work situation. They have some very specific screening they do also to find out what those physical disabilities are. So just being, just having alcoholism does not designate you as disabled. It's the, the diseases that are, come from that. And also the, the drug rehab part of it. I don't know if that's part of this housing or not, but, um, let's see. In regard to those protected with disabilities from discrimination, if there's a section in there that refers to things that are excluded, one of the items is if there are risks to others or their property. And the government also stipulates, the federal government, individuals with history of assault or property crime may be excluded from housing, whether or not those convicted are persons with disabilities. So the way I read it, in these housing, these people that are allowed in these housing programs, if they are, have a history of property crime or assault, that they cannot become a part of this, these housing programs. And this is all under the Disabilities Act that I got all of this from. So I, I just thought I would point that out, so that when you do more checking into this, that maybe there's some other items in here that you might want to look at. I'm not saying that the people should not be protected. I think they should be protected by the Disability Act. But there are people who will slide in, they actually get help to get in these programs from, even from some law firms. I found out that, find, tell them how to get in there, and they tell them that, you know, if you stop drinking, and, and you can be cured of, you know, whatever your ailment is, then you're not going to get your disability pay, and you're not going to be able to get housing. I mean, they, they actually help people stay in these programs, and when they don't really need to. Also, we have a petition here that the neighborhood signed, and they'd like to have it entered into the minutes.
Thank you. Please give it to the clerk.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Crosswhite. Mr. Smith, there were some pretty detailed questions there having to do with federal disability law, but I mean, do you have any, any general response to the things that you just heard?
So let me, let me first say, I'll, you know, take some of it backwards. The concept of risk to others, we do have an exception within the ordinance regarding that, but the, they're going to do an individualized assessment, they're not going to simply going to look at some prior history and determine that. I can't find quite the quote from the, the, I'm looking through the joint statement of both HUD and the Department of Justice on that. I was looking for that, I can't quite find that right up my fingertips, but I, I did find one of the other quotes, and, and I'll read it here. "The term 'group home' includes homes occupied by persons in recovery from alcohol or substance abuse who are persons with disabilities under the Act." HUD and Department of Justice takes a, whether it's a broad interpretation, or it's, it's their interpretation, and they're the ones that are enforcing it. And so, so I hear what she's saying. We're, we're complying with the federal law, and we're, we're mimicking another city for a very specific reason, because they have not received a legal challenge as to date regarding their, their ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So Ms. Crosswhite, again, the, the issue on our agenda tonight is voting to have a hearing next Monday. So I would invite you to, via email or otherwise, if you have some specific questions, please forward them to Mr. Smith, and maybe we can continue the conversation next Monday night. Okay? Janice Genoville.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I was really trying not to come up on this issue, but I came across the Prescott ordinance, and I just wanted to share it with Mr. Smith, that it does say four or less. So we thought that was a helpful fact, and I'd love a comment on that. Do you have a comment on that, Mr. Smith?
So Mayor, and maybe the speakers aren't familiar with this, you have to address the council, and then the mayor has to recognize me to speak.
I'm sorry.
So you shouldn't address your comments.
And we don't want to impede on your time, so listen to all the questions you have, and I promise.
Yeah, we have one other real quick thing, and it was just that I had identified this week that 151 Hibbert is a 20-bed facility for individuals with mental illness. I didn't know that. It's a halfway house, is what the residents that I went and spoke to called it, and I just wanted to make sure that they were in compliance with the zoning laws, because that is 20 beds. And I wanted to make sure about that, so that's all I had tonight.
Great. Just to follow through, why don't you send an email to that effect, so we can make sure that goes to code compliance?
Great, thank you.
Mr. Smith, is there, can you respond to the suggestion that the, the other ordinance that we're mimicking is something less than five?
So, so it's, you know, I always think of it as a side of a quarter. So it's the same, so in Prescott, they define family as four, it's related people plus four unrelated people. And so that's, that's the number of unrelated people. So the key, though, is, is then the next number is the number in which the regulations kick in. That's five. So when we're talking about it, when you, you're looking sort of apples to apples between different city codes, some city codes define family explicitly, some do it sort of implicitly like Mesa does, we just simply identify the number in which the regulations start. And so it is true, Prescott identified, Prescott's definition of family is four or fewer unrelated people. That means the regulations start at five. Phoenix's, and I, you know, and I probably said it too fast at a previous study session, Phoenix's is five unrelated people as a family, so the regulations kick in at six. And so that's how that works. And so we, we've talked to, and, and just, you know, we're looking at changing our definitions. There was a comment last time about the definitions. We've looked at that already, just so you know, and one of them is making the definition of family explicit, and then also looking at that number. That's, that's a process in which we're going to also hire a consultant because of issues with that, and we're going to move forward with that, but that'll take some time. We didn't want to wait for that to pass this, because we, we know that that process will take some time, and that's in the zoning code. So instead of holding up this, this ordinance, we've moved forward with this ordinance with that, with the number six as the number in which the regulations kick in. If we had an explicit definition of family, it would be five unrelated people, but we don't. And so we, we wanted to move forward with this ordinance now, and we'll come back and look at that definition of family and hire the consultant we discussed in the last study session.
Thank you. I see Ms. Genoville nodding her head, so hopefully that clarifies any question. Any additional requests to speak on this? Ms. Mickelson, thank you. Council, any questions?
I've got one question.
Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
What happens if this doesn't pass? Does it become, do we become more restrictive on these, or does it become completely unrestricted? What happens if we don't pass, or, I know we're not actually going to pass this tonight just to put it on agenda, but what's the downside of this if we don't do anything?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, this adds regulations that don't currently exist, and so the regulations will not exist as to these, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion to proceed? Thank you. Mr. Glover has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of proceeding, so a week, one week from tonight, we will have a public hearing on this ordinance. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 9A. This is to take comment on a zoning ordinance. It has to do with the 100 block of West 8th Place and West 9th Street, located southeast of Brown Road and Country Club Drive. It's to rezone from RS6 to RS6HD to establish the Flying Acres Historic District. We do have two requests to speak on this item. The first is Janice Genoville.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Boy, when you can pronounce Genoville, you know I've been here a lot. Well, we are here, a couple of the Historic Preservation Board members are here tonight to really celebrate and just give a shout out for a brand-new historic district that's come to Mesa called Flying Acres. And one of our residents that I want to thank, she's, none of them are here tonight, but her name is Amy Mahoney, and she's a resident of Flying Acres. She spent a year working so hard to get all of the data and all of the information together to create this district, and she couldn't have done it without the help of our wonderful longtime resident Lori Ofshewski of Second Street Historic District. We thank her for her great expertise and her help that she gave to Amy to push this through. Now, we are so grateful to you all for the $50,000 contractor position that you gave us, because a resident like Amy wouldn't have had anyone to go to, to create a new district, but we had Lauren Elstop here, and what a, what a great job she did in mobilizing our neighborhoods, updating the Historic Preservation website, and getting all of those great pass-through grants, along with those two, I think I gave you four pages of all the things that Lauren accomplished in her very short time as our historic professional. So kudos, and thank you for your assistance on that. I also want to thank you so much for approving the $100,000 line budget item for the professional historic preservation officer. We're truly grateful for it, and it is critical at this time that we have a permanent, full-time historic preservation officer with the education and experience behind them in the City of Mesa. It's a little sad that right now, at this very critical time, we are without a historic professional while we're going through the Temple District, while we've got the Downtown Pass Through Grant, we've got the Sign Ordinance Grant, and we don't have the staff available to push those items through. So the sooner that we get that permanent person, and I know Mr. Thompson and Whitaker, the discussion comes down to, should it be a contractor or a consultant? And we've had lots of discussion about this. And I have a new argument. It's, it's not really an argument, it's just a new idea about it, but if we were to, so of course, the Preservation Board continues to recommend that the full-time preservation officer is a city-funded position. So they have that autonomy, that business card, access to emails, but what happens when, because what's happening when it's a consultant or otherwise, is that the onus of the work falls on the staff, and that's what's been happening. Poor Kim and John are wearing two hats over there, and they can't get the work done. So if we had that permanent city professional, and they used a contractor or a consultant to assist them, we think that might be a really good resolution. So I, I hope for all of your support on this, and thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Janice. Greg Merrick.
Good evening. My name is Greg Merrick, and I'm a member of the City of Mesa Historic Preservation Board. I don't think maybe a lot of people know where Flying Acres is located, and I'd like to give a brief background. I think there is perhaps a map that was given that you can put on the, on the monitors, if you have it. But Flying Acres is Mesa's eighth designated historic district, so it's, I think it's quite an accomplishment for our historic preservation program, we have eight historic districts. Oh, sorry. The new historic district is located north of University Drive and west of Center Street, includes both sides of 8th Place and 9th Street, between Grand and McDonald Streets. The district includes 34 single-family residences with a period of significance between 1940 and 1957. The property owners are pursuing the local historic overlay, which you're voting on tonight, as well as a National Register designation. And the city's historic preservation professional, what Janice was talking about, was working with the neighborhood on the National Register nomination until her funding ran out. The developer of this subdivision was Major John, I mean Jake L. Wilk Jr. and his wife Vivian, and they created this Flying Acres subdivision on November 16, 1946, by dividing their original land into 36 almost symmetrical lots facing north and south on the two streets. The name Flying Acres was undoubtedly connected to the fact that Major Wilk was a training and operations officer at Williams Field, and this provides actually a direct link between Mesa and Williams Field at this point. Wilk also may have had a name and say in naming some of the streets when he created Flying Acres, by naming the streets after aeronautical references, but the street names were changed in 1952 to 8th Place and 9th Street. The architectural styles of these houses include the international style, but variations on the ranch house characterize this district and provides a time capsule of the development from the transitional ranch to the early ranch. And the basic form includes a simple rectangular L-shaped floor plan, low-slung roofs, concrete masonry walls, often with steel casement windows, but homes also include wood double-hung and diamond-tained windows. And the district includes a variety of applied architectural elements that add individuality and character. And being in a historic district really helps property owners, work together, retain the historic character of their neighborhood, but those property owners who own contributing properties are eligible for the Arizona State Historic Property Tax Program, provided they maintain the historic integrity of their property, and this can reduce their property tax assessment between 35% and 45%. And finally, I just want to mention that the city has identified 197 post-World War II neighborhoods in Mesa, mostly in West Mesa, but most are not going to be eligible for historic designation. So there is interest in neighborhoods already of being designated historic, so the Historic Preservation Board, along with the Historic Preservation Officer, will be working to identify and work at these to identify which ones should be further studied. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Council, any questions regarding this agenda item? Is there, there's a motion that's been made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. I can't help but say, I grew up on West 9th Street, just a short block away from this district. I'm enthusiastically in support of this. These are, it's a beautiful neighborhood, love all the homes in there, so very exciting. Please cast your vote. Unanimous in favor of the agenda item. The next item on our agenda is Item 11, Items from Citizens Present. Ms. Mickelson, I have two cards. Do you have any, it looks like we may be receiving a third card, is that right? We'll go ahead and take these in the order that I received them. The first is Karen, and I apologize, Karen, I'm going to mispronounce your name. Jeverite. Nothing close, right? I'm sorry. I'm sure it's a beautiful last name. Pronounce it for me, please.
Yes, of course. My name is Karen Givert, and I live here in Mesa, it's 5415 East McKillip's Road. I'm just concerned about the ASU project. I remember voting no in the 2016 election. I was against this project due to the $75 million price tag. Now you plan to go ahead with this ASU project. So going against the voter's wishes, which as I am one, is wrong, and I feel, as a voter who voted no, a little disenfranchised. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Roy Tatum.
Good evening. Happy to see all of the council members here today. Roy Tatum with the East Valley NAACP, currently here to continue the conversation in regards to Mesa Police Conduct. We've had a number of community discussions, community conversations around Mesa Police. I want to acknowledge and appreciate you all in the Police Department for agreeing to drop the charges against Robert Johnson, so I think that is the right thing to do. I would also like to take that a step further. I don't know if there's been a formal apology rendered to Mr. Johnson. I would request that the city render an official apology to Mr. Johnson for his encounter with the Mesa Police. I also would like to know and hear from Mesa, Mesa Council in regards to the, the current status of the investigation. I know there's a pending investigation criminally and internally. We would like to, many people in the community are asking what's happening, what's the status. When we were in the heat of things, our phones ringing off the hook, got kind of quiet. We want to continue the dialogue, we want to continue the discussion in regards to Mesa Police Conduct. We've already acknowledged that we, we want to give Chief Batista time to get things together, but we want to know, we want to be a partner in this discussion, in these developments, and, and we want to be aware of what the discipline will be taking place in regards to the officers, not just in the Robert Johnson case, but in not just in the Robert Johnson case, but in the other cases that have come forward over the last couple of weeks. So, we, we're not sweeping it under the rug. I'm holding on to my commitment to being in touch and being an active member of the community, and hopefully serving as somewhat of a liaison between the city officials and Mesa Police and the community at large. And the community at large is still suffering, the community at large is still a bit traumatized, is still afraid of Mesa Police, and that is not where we want to be. We want to heal. We don't want to just sweep it under the rug. We want to have a functional, beneficial relationship between our city government, our city police, and our community at large. I have representatives from the community, Pastor Juan Brown of Progressive Baptist Church, who's done some amazing job, done an amazing job in organizing some of the local pastors, and he's developing some plans that I believe that we want to share with you, Mayor Giles, and members of the city council, to talk about how communities can come together and utilize their churches, and talk to the pastors in regards to some of the things that they're seeing, because many people are not comfortable still talking to the Mesa Police. And so, hopefully, we hear more from the city in regards to the ongoing investigations and their feelings and your feelings in regards to Mesa Police Conduct, and also, I believe that there's, there should be apologies rendered to those who were victims of police brutality here in Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. As you know, we can't respond because this is not on our agenda, but I would invite you to reach out to council and to the Police Department so you can set some expectations on timing. Kiana Maria Sears.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all members of the city council. Again, my name's Kiana Maria Sears, address 2403 North Raven Circle, a 23-year resident of Mesa. I'm here tonight to speak on the same topic that Mr. Tatum was talking about, and I do realize that this isn't an agenda item, so I would like to see a discussion, an agenda item, and the opportunity for my beloved city council members to be able to address and talk about this issue, understanding how councils work, understanding your obligations as elected officials. I do realize that being able to discuss and relate to the public sometimes is hindered a little bit by your obligations. So, I do want to see a study session, I do want to see maybe a public hearing to discuss this issue, because I'm honored by the mayor and police chief Batista and his absence, opportunity to actually go out and interact with the community and actually hear what we're saying. And as someone who is definitely very aware, intimately aware, from a household perspective, my husband, my brother, family members, not having the luxury to walk in our neighborhoods and feel safe at night, I definitely want to see that healing. I invest myself and my time because I want to see a better Mesa, which was one time, one of our themes, and then we talked about Mesa being one community, and as someone who embraces Mesa with everything that I have in me, I'm here today to ask you to definitely pursue this open dialogue, to put it on an agenda, and the public needs to hear each and one of, each and every one of your voices. So, I know in order to do that, we need an agenda, we need a public hearing, and you need to be able to say what you feel and express your opinions, and as someone who always loves to interact with our constituents, it's important for you to be able to do the same thing, so I'm bringing a voice to, that's another reason why this is needed, not just the mayor, not just the police chief, but each and every one of you, that we've put our trust in and elected. And I just love the idea that we can call you and reach out to you, so this is another way of giving back and being approachable and doing what Mesa do. When everyone thinks about Mesa, they think of us as being a family-centered community, and each and every family, and each and every family member should first feel safe in our community, but secondly, know that every leader that is elected represents each and every one of us. So, that's why I came today in support of having that public hearing dialogue and it being an agenda item, and actually something where we get to hear you as leaders, interact and share your heart with the entire community about the efforts to make this issue better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sears. That concludes the items on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.[1768.24]